Actually, she'll have to show it to you. And if you... No, no, okay. I'll push it. You leave it? Okay. All right. Of course. I mean, if you're going to be... When I say, "Did you hear that?" I will answer. But, uh, like if you... I know, that's why I do one... That's why I do that. I said, "This is really good." (laughing)
(inaudible) 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 (laughing) (inaudible) (laughing) (inaudible) (laughing) (inaudible) (laughing) (inaudible) (laughing) (inaudible) (laughing) I mean, if you're going to be... When I say, "Did you hear that?" (inaudible) But, uh, like if you... I know, that's why I do one... That's why I do that. I said, "This is really good." (laughing) (inaudible) (inaudible) (laughing) 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 (inaudible) This meeting of Southfield Board of Education is now in progress. Uh, but I ask Michael Cool, if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance. (applause) (inaudible) 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 Good evening, and welcome to the, uh, March 10-12 Meeting of Southfield Board of Education. My name is Darryl Buchanan, and I'm the President.
I'm Soren Katz, Vice President.
Michael Cool, Board Treasurer.
Daniel Lewis, Board Trustee.
Senator Rafferty, Board Trustee.
And Russ Williams, Board Trustee.
Senator Peters, Southfield High School Junior Representative.
Rachel Webb, Southfield Laker High School Junior Representative.
Wanda Cook Robinson, Superintendent.
Kathy Trance, Associate Superintendent for Administrative Services.
David Turner, Associate Superintendent for Human Resources and Labor Relations.
Linda Wood, Associate Superintendent for Instruction.
And, uh, taking, uh, record of our proceedings tonight is, uh, Mr. Cole Christian. Uh, in his back, we have Chuck Cassis, uh, on video. We have a new student on, on the audio that we haven't met yet. So, what's your name?
Ariana Guyton.
Oh, and Miss Ariana Guyton, who is, uh, on the audio tonight. So, thank you, Ariana. All right, um, we'll now move to the, uh, important student representative. I always get confused who went first, so this time I'll just say Senator, um, if you would lead.
Okay. Good evening. Thanks for visiting Southfield High School this week. Last Friday, March 9th, the Blue Jays basketball team won the district championship. This is their third consecutive district championship, and I'd like to congratulate them and also Coach T. Lee for leading them to victory. The Royals basketball team also played their last game last week, completing their season. Also in sports, child Chris Rainford starts this week. These sports include baseball, softball, girls tennis, track and field, softball, and golf. Last week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, with A P T, M M E, and work teams testing for juniors. Ninety-nine fifteen of Southfield High School juniors present for this testing. For the two hundred and sixty-two students who made the honor roll for the third card marking, an honor practice was served on Monday, March 5th. In the previous week, an honor ceremony was held for the one hundred and eighty-one students who maintained honor roll status for the entire first semester. Parents intended, parents attended, and refreshments were served. Today, there was a induction ceremony for the National Honor Society. I'd also like to congratulate the sixteen new members, which included juniors, sophomores, and seniors and their families. I'd also like to thank Miss Katz, Dr. Robinson, and Mrs. Turner for being here and attending. Thank you, and this concludes our report.
Thank you, and now we'll have the report from Rachel Webb, uh, Southfield Laker High.
Well, Southfield Laker High School has had many exciting events that have taken place this past month. During the week of February twenty-seventh through March second, the Lady Chargers squad defeated Berkeley, Oak Park, and Southfield High, who won the state A district. This is the ninth time in the past ten years the Lady Chargers won the district. Congratulations to coaches Michelle Marshall and Cynthia Maxwell and the Lady Chargers for their repeated success. During the week of March fifth through ninth, the boys' basketball team defeated Detroit Henry Ford High School, but were defeated by Oak Park High School during their, their next game. On March second, two thousand twelve, the Southfield Laker Deca program received notification that they were awarded a silver level of certification for the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve school year. Of the approximately fifteen hundred schools throughout the across the nation, only seventeen were awarded the silver certification this year. Congratulations to Dr. Vedaschuk and the Lady Deca teams. On March fifth, two thousand twelve, three Deca students and their advisor were the guests of Comcast for Mayor Linda Lawrence's State of the City address at the Westin Hotel. The A P T M M E test was held for all district juniors on March sixth, seventh, and eighth. Students from the A S D classes visited Dan Miller and Fox Two today. The students got to meet Mr. Miller and saw the workings of the studio. On March twenty-fourth through twenty-seventh, two of the National Honor Society teams will present at the state level conference. The two presentations will be underclassmen ultra extravaganza and powerfully themed by the N H S ProView. Student Congress will also be presenting at the state level conference with Homecoming Our Way. Um, Southfield Laker will host their next blood drive in the library on March sixteenth, sixteen, two thousand twelve. That is my report.
Thank you. Um, well, we're just going to keep moving on tonight because we have a wonderful agenda to find out if, uh, we can get a way to the Senator, uh, for her before, Dr. Cook Robinson.
Um, I'd just like to bring attention to the beautiful artwork that's in there. If you'll look and see the mass of the beautiful community, come on down and take a look. The artwork is from Adler School, and it was done by our elementary students. Uh, you see how beautiful it is. I'd like to begin by just having a shout-out for Southfield Laker High School and the students that attend Mr. Hank Wood Delft's Autumn Spectrum Disorder class. These young people were invited to Fox News to do tours, and you know, they rarely do tours these days, but they took on these students. And if you will look at the screen, you will see a picture of the class with the sportscaster there, and they are right behind the Channel Two news desk, and they were just so excited to be there and to have that opportunity. The port-a-lie Thomas also took time to speak and interact with our students, and I think that's the next picture that we have. And you can see, took a picture with one of our students there. So, I just wanted to share that with our board, that our students, our high school students, um, that have challenges out in the community and learning about various aspects of radio and broadcasting. I'd also like to bring to the podium this evening, Mr. Vincent Cookworth. Uh, I had the opportunity of meeting him a couple of weeks ago when he brought the Legacy Mobile to Adler. I was so impressed with the work there, and especially after he told me he was a Southfield Public School alumni, I was really invited. So, he's here this evening just to share with us information about the M R I's Experiential Tours and Equipment and American Legacy Magazine Mobile Museum.
Thank you, Dr. Cook Robinson. Uh, thank you for inviting me out here today. Um, it's an honor, uh, and a privilege to be here to speak with you, um, on this evening to the board, uh, the superintendents, and the staff, and the, um, community as well. Uh, when we came out to Adler on February twenty-eighth, we were invited by Principal Tate, and we, we worked on it for weeks in advance with, uh, help from Mrs. Jackie Robinson and the P R department. And the event just, it was so, it was such a great event. Uh, the city of Southfield, the education department were so welcoming to us. Um, I represent M R A Experiential Tours and Equipment, uh, and we collaborated with American Legacy Magazine to turn the pages of the magazine, which is an African-American publication that celebrates African-American history and what we, what African-Americans have done, uh, in our society. Uh, we teamed up with the magazine and created a mobile exhibit, and on that exhibit, you'll find photos, you'll find images, you'll find, uh, stories, multimedia, that talk about African-Americans and, and the things that they've done, um, in our society. So, um, M R A Experiential Tours has, has been doing this for, uh, several years. Um, we build mobile exhibits, and we're really pushing, um, lately, in the last couple of years, our educat-, mobile educational outreach program, and, and that's what, that's what we really want to, uh, push mostly. Um, that's why we were so happy that Southfield were able to, uh, welcome us out, uh, and hopefully this is a, a, um, a relationship starter so that we can bring out other exhibits to the schools. One thing that I wanted to highlight is that, um, just before the Adler event, we were in Philadelphia, and we were also in New York City. Um, we've been other places, especially in the month of February. However, the students from Adler stood out. Um, we invited other schools to come out, MacArthur, McIntyre, Grace Literally, and one thing I noticed, and, uh, let me mention that the founder of American Legacy Magazine was there as well. He flew out from New York, and a lot of times on the exhibit, we have several computers, and we, from time to time, see kids go on the computer, and they may check their Facebook, and they may check YouTube. Um, and I'm not just saying this because I'm in front of you guys today. Not one student out of over seven hundred that were able to tour the exhibit got on anything besides what they were supposed to do on those computers. They looked up African-Americans that they didn't know. Uh, the teachers didn't have to tell them what to do, they were on it, and I didn't have to say one word about what they were looking on the computer. So, it just warms my heart, uh, it warmed the American Legacy founder's heart, uh, Principal Tate. They also noticed of that. Um, so it was, it was a really special time. We, um, I just want to, uh, mention that M R A Experiential Tours, uh, President Harry Kurtz, who allowed for the exhibit to come out to Southfield is here, uh, if he would stand for him and go raise his hand, uh, he, he is... And when I, when I mentioned to him that we wanted to come to Southfield, uh, one, because we established a relationship with, uh, Principal Tate, and he was very warm with us, and we met him at another event. Um, and I've actually worked with Mr. Tate before, uh, he kind of, uh, mentored towards me, uh, Principal Tate. But I told, uh, Harry Kurtz that I went to Kennedy Elementary School years ago, uh, and then after Kennedy, I went to Thompson. Uh, fortunately, I left the district, uh, for high school, um, and continued my studies in undergrad at Wayne State, and I received my masters from Wayne State as well. Uh, but I always credit it all back to Kennedy Elementary School and Thompson Middle School, and that's where I got my start, that's where I learned to respect my elders, things like that, uh, learned how to, uh, get good grades and, and motivate, self-motivate, and things like that. And from what I saw in Adler, the teachers, uh, Dr. Cook Robinson, all the way, you know, even Mrs. Katz was there, uh, that day, it's, it's all around the city, it's all around the school, so the kids have no choice but to be successful. And it's such an honor and a privilege to come back, uh, years later and see that, um, you all, the city, uh, some of you guys were here when I was back in school, were a big part of, of my success right now, and I just want to thank you for that. Um, hopefully in the future, we'll be able to bring some more, uh, different exhibits that we have, uh, focused on educational outreach to maybe some other schools, and we can continue to bust, uh, other schools over if, you know, if all of them can't make it. I believe Adler has close to five hundred students, but, uh, we were able to get other students, so it was close, close to eight hundred students come out that day, and I don't think there's another time where you can get eight hundred students in a matter of six hours to view an exhibit such as this without having to, uh, take them across the town or pay for all these expenses for it to, for it to, for them to experience and immerse in something like this. So, uh, on behalf of M R A Experiential Tours and Equipment and American Legacy Magazine, we want to present something to, uh, I'm going to present it to Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, but this is for the whole, uh, the whole board and the whole city. We have a, um... (pause) Uh... (pause) 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 It's a scale model truck of the exhibit that we brought to you guys, so... (laughing) 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 So, again, we thank you for having us, thank you for having me tonight.
(inaudible) (laughing) 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 Thank you so much. Don't leave, we have too many videos, we're going to take the audience there with us.
Okay, great, great.
And I'm sorry. (pause) 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 (pause)
We're in the African-American Legacy History Mobile Exhibit. We've transformed the pages of the magazine into a mobile exhibit that talks about and celebrates the history and culture of African-Americans, and as you look around, you'll be able to see those different artifacts, different pictures, people you may recognize and people you may not recognize. Read the information, and if you guys have questions, let me know, okay? (music) 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 (music)
We want to thank you for that wonderful opportunity, and if there is an opportunity for the mobile to come back, we would be very, very interested.
Absolutely.
Thank you. As we continue, um, this evening, I'd like to bring Diana Schubert now to the podium, and Diana is one of our special education teachers. She teaches students... Uh-oh. She teaches students who are moderately cognitively impaired, and just recently, she did a presentation at a national conference, and I wanted her to do just a little snippet of that for you. You know, we share with the public, and I share with the board, that we have fantastic teachers here in Southfield Public School, and what Diana's going to show you this evening is just an example of what they do in, in our classroom. Her particular, um, presentation deals with technology in the twenty-first century with our special needs kids, and I thought it was something that was a must-see for the board and the community. Okay?
Thank you. I'd like to say good evening to the board, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, the cabinet, and the community. I had, I was fortunate enough to have this opportunity just a few weeks ago, um, at the Conference Council for Exceptional Children, C E C Conference up in Grand Rapids, and I was presenting at the annual conference here. It was a wonderful opportunity. Um, I also took with me a general education teacher that, um, worked with some of the students that have special needs in my classroom, and together, we went there, and we talked about how technology supports all students, especially the students that are in my classroom, receiving support and, um, are the curriculum in a general education setting. I'm just waiting here for...
Need the password.
Bailey12. (laughing) 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 As much as we all love technology, there's always a glitch, and there was a glitch because I have a short video that I want to show at the end, and for some reason, our, um, circuit would not run it, so he's running the slideshow on my computer. Sorry. But I guess I can give you a little background about, um, my classroom with Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson is set. I'm currently teaching in a C I program. However, I have students that have cognitive impairments, E C D D, which is Early Childhood Developmental Delay, and traumatic brain injuries. So, there is a range of students, um, types of disabilities in my classroom. I teach students from kindergarten through fifth grade, so quite often throughout the day, they're all in my classroom at the same time. Um, but this year, we are fortunate enough to change the program a little bit. I am no longer considered a self-contained classroom. My students are on a general education teacher's caseload. They come to me for service, for reading, and for math. They receive their science and social studies in their general classrooms, as well as their specials, you know, gym, music, art, and, um, and lunch, and all of that. While we're waiting to get started, I would like for you guys to think about what it was like in the classroom when you were in school, when you were younger. What did your environment look like? How was the, the delivery of the instruction? What did it look like? Traditional classrooms, you would see blackboards, you would see teachers lecturing, a lot of paper pencil tasks, worksheets, tons of worksheets, but not in the twenty-first century classroom. It looks a lot different. In our classrooms, you see interactive whiteboards, you see iPads, you see computers. Children are able to express themselves not only on paper and pencil, but with project-based learning. You see center-based learning in our classrooms today, so it looks completely different than it did many years ago. And as society changes to this digital world society, us teachers need to change with time and look at the way we deliver instruction, and technology is a huge part of the twenty-first century classroom. Idea requires specially-designed instruction, which means teaching students and methods used by the teachers to instruct students that have special needs in a general education setting. And Southfield has adopted the philosophy of differentiated instruction. You want to scan down? Thank you. Differentiated instruction is a huge component of the way we all deliver instruction here in Southfield. And differentiated instruction, the philosophy, is that all students are not alike. They went different, they have different learning styles, they need the delivery to look different for them, and we're meeting all our students at the level that they are at, whether they're general education students or the students with special needs. And assistive technology supports differentiated instruction, S D I. You have different components of assistive technology. You have low-tech, you have medium-tech, and you have high-tech. And the two devices that I would like to talk about today that have made the hugest impact in the way I deliver my instruction and in my classroom is the interactive whiteboard, which is the smartboard, and iPad. Last January, I was fortunate enough to receive a smartboard in my classroom, and when I got it, I looked at it, and I was not techy, and I said, "Okay, what am I going to do with this?" I got to figure it out. So, I started playing, playing, and I had a little bit of training on it prior to receiving it that I had forgot because my training was actually in August. So, once I began playing with it, I said, "Wow, this is the most amazing tool for our students," and it changed my whole philosophy, the way I teach in my classroom, because of the facial expressions, the interaction, the engagement I saw in my students, the retention. I had students that, um, had A D H D, they couldn't focus at difficult times, and that was the interactive whiteboard. They were up there, they were engaged, when other students were at the board, interacting and touching the board, they were watching the other students. They weren't looking at what else was going around the room, so that really made a huge impact. I'm fortunate that in my, um, building right now at Vandenberg, that all teachers in our building have smartboards. I was so excited with this, uh, smartboard that by April, four months later, I was asked from the specialist department, "I want to be certified, and I want to train others in our district." I was lucky enough that they sent me for training. I became a certified smartboard trainer. This fall, I began training some general teachers in my building, and now the specialist teachers in our district. It is an amazing tool. The iPad is another wonderful device. It's a mobile learning device, so students can take it anywhere. They're learning on-the-go, they're learning in our classrooms, they have access to multiple things. An iPad provides multiple paths for engagement, expression, and helps students with different learning styles, connect to the world in new ways. In my classroom, having a K-five classroom, I can't get up and just lecture. I can't get up and teach the whole classroom at the same time because nobody's on the same page. I use the center-based learning. So, some of the technology that I use in my classroom, you'll see students working at, uh, working on them in a small group setting, you'll see them working on them independently. When I may be at the back of the classroom, teaching a small group, you might see some students on an iPad, some students up the smartboard without me interacting on an activity, some students working on something at their desk, on a computer, and whatnot. And without this assistive technology or just technology in general, I would not be able to do that because many students, when they have worksheets in front of them, especially students that have special needs and need a lot more one-on-one or small group instruction, they get a worksheet, they go back to it, it's all wrong, they're just marking it, they're, they're there, they're content, but they're not getting any type of learning in, in the process. So, with the assistive technology, there's always feedback for them. They are able to, to work on, at work at their functioning level, and the technology supports them at that. I like to think of my classroom as a blended learning classroom, which, we don't completely throw away traditional teaching, it is incorporated into the twenty-first century classroom. However, technology is the hugest piece in the twenty-first century classroom. So, I'd like you to take a look at a short video, and it's a clip of some of my students in my classroom working, um, and using with different types of technology. (pause) 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 There you go. It's underneath on the left there, I think you got to move that far up. Yeah, if you move that, nope, you got to move, yeah, that far up, and then you'll be able to tap on it. There you go.
All right.
Thank you. (pause) 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 It works. (laughing) 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 Let's practice with this formula. Of the formula that tells, okay? I want you to watch, iPad, you're going to watch your lips, and then we're going to practice. Let me see your lips. Where should your lips start? Brrr. Let me hear everybody. Brrr. Good. So when we see B and R put together, says, "Brrr." Let me hear you. And after nine, I tell you, come on up. Excellent. Good job. We're going to stop right here. And you see, the students are extremely excited. And that is why I changed the way I teach. I'm so fortunate that I have opportunity in this district to receive the type of technology that I have received. Last, or two weeks ago, when I presented at CEC, I kind of surveyed, as I was talking about the smartboard, I was talking about the iPad, and I surveyed the participants. And I had about 60 participants in my session. I said, "How many of you have a smartboard? Maybe you have an iPad in your classroom." Less than 15 people raised their hand. So there are people throughout Michigan, I'm not sure what district, but it was really shocking for me. And so I had many participants come up to me afterwards and, you know, had many questions. And I said, you know, I had this great opportunity in our district that you really need to push technology in the classroom. And one other thing I did learn at the conference was the new assessment that will be coming out in 2014, 2015. Click one more time. Smarter, sorry. Smart ballot? Anyways, it's going to be online. It's not a paper pencil, it's not a multiple choice with our pencils, so every student is going to be taking this assessment online. That was something that was new for me. And it's based on the core curriculum. So we need to start preparing our students, preparing our teachers for the change that education is taking. I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity today to present. I'd like to open my door to any of you that would like to come and visit it in action. So thank you. And Debbie, did you bring someone with you? I did. I brought my genetic, my general education teacher with Stacy Lewandowski. She came with me. Oh, she's not here tonight. Is that someone else with you? She did. She's my support. I have Ms. Ramsey, and I have, I have, I'm sorry. I have my director Pamela Bard, and my principal Terry John, both of them. Thank you so much for your support. I couldn't live without their support. Everything I have is because of them. Fantastic. Thank you. Exciting. Now, I'd like to bring this up in, is Jackie Robinson, our PR and marketing manager. And she is going to share an update with the board and the community on Revolution Read.
Good evening. I'm so glad you came out to join us today. And I want to thank the board for your leadership. I want to thank the cabinet for your service, and I want to thank the superintendent for your vision. Tonight, I am very excited to share with you an initiative that's for the entire community. This is something that we believe is going to have a great impact on our students and help make sure that they're able to compete globally and just take them to the next, to the next level. So we're really excited about this initiative, and I'm happy that I can share it with you tonight. As we're warming up, we all know about Southfield Public Schools. This is a tremendous district. We have many programs that other districts wish that they had. We have the International Baccalaureate Program, which is one, we're one district of just a few in the states that offer this program for early elementary through high school. We have the A.C. Prep Program. We have the STEM Program, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And our students are already in high school, getting grants for these programs. I met some students at Southfield High School. I think he was an 11th grade student. He was already receiving grants because of his work in engineering. He already submitted, he received multiple grants. And so our district is on the move. We have these programs, we have these services, we have things to offer that other districts don't have. There's something else that we have in Southfield. We have a lot of businesses. We have businesses that are looking for skilled workers. We have over 100 Fortune 500 companies, over 9,000 businesses. And these are businesses that are interested in partnering with us. They're businesses that are looking for a special skill set. They're looking for specific things from Southfield Public Schools, and those are things that we definitely want to deliver to these businesses. We want to make sure that our students are positioned. You know, it doesn't make sense to go through schools and you don't have the tools you need to do the job. And in Southfield Public Schools, if we're anything else, we're all about business. We're about making sure that our students are prepared. And so there's one thing, there's one thing that stops us. It's a big issue. It's an issue across the nation. And that's the issue of literacy or illiteracy. Illiteracy is a big issue nationally, Oakland County, Wayne County, McComb County. It's something that we really have to take a look at as a community and wrap our arms around if we want to see a change. And we're talking about a change here. We're not talking about status quo. We're talking about a revolution. We're talking about upsetting the apple cart and doing something entirely different. I want to share with you just a few statistics. These are national statistics, but they kind of give you a picture of where we are with the issue of literacy. It's estimated that by fourth grade, many students, maybe as many as two-thirds, have fallen off of their reading level and their reading below reading level. That's a huge statistic, two-thirds. So once that cycle begins, they become discouraged, and it becomes a treadmill. Thirteen percent of all 17-year-olds are functionally literate. What does that look like? That means that you can't read your textbooks, you can't work a checkbook, you can't read a bus stop sign, you can't even look at your, if you get prescriptions, you can't read the prescription labels. You're embarrassed, and you're humiliated. And many of these children drop out of school, and they just quit trying. In fact, 85% of juvenile offenders are students that have reading issues. They're students that can't read. Why should they keep trying if they can't read? They're discouraged. So what are we going to do about this? Well, I'm going to tell you what we're going to do about this. We want to wrap the whole community around this issue and create a culture of reading, a culture that embraces the love of reading, a culture that embraces lifelong learning. I remember when I was a girl, I read everything. I read, Mr. Turner called me a nerd. I read dictionaries, I read history, I read science fiction, and I know many of you love to read. I have a friend who, he loved reading so much that he was reading at night by his, he had a kerosene lamp that was part of the science kit. He happened to sit in his brother's bed while he was reading, but, but he loved to read. And we want to mobilize the members of all the societies around the issue of reading to restore this love of reading. And I'm going to tell you how we're going to do that. Can I do this? Well, I was hoping for my beautiful slide, but I'll just show you the picture. This is Revolution Read. Revolution Read is more than an initiative, it's a movement. Revolution Read is something that we want to use to reverse the trend of illiteracy. It's a call to action. It's a movement to restore the love of reading in our students, and it's a determination to make sure that our students are fully equipped. We have many partners in this initiative. It's been so exciting that Krishnan and I have been out in the community, and the superintendent, we've talked to the principals, we've talked to the teachers, we've talked to the unions, we've talked to faith-based leaders, we've talked to the businesses, we've talked to everyone who would listen about this initiative. And we've gained many partners. Mayor Brenda Lawrence is a partner, the mayor of Laker Village is a partner, Southfield Public Library has joined us, Scholastic, which is a book company that's over 100 years old, I think they're 90 years old. They have a history of teaching children to read, helping teachers teach children to read. They are partners. And all of our business and community members. So our goal, our plan here is simple, but it's not easy. Our plan is to ensure that all students are reading at grade level by fifth grade. If we can do that, we can change this trend that we're seeing now. If every student that comes through Southfield Public Schools is able to read at grade level by fifth grade, we can do some damage to those statistics, and that's what we intend to do. We're going to do this by creating a strong summer reading program. I've talked with principals and teachers, and they've told me that above all else, that we need to prevent summer slides. I'm going to step over here and borrow a water. Because I know you don't want to see me licking my lips. How many of you have heard of summer slides? Test of you. Summer slides, when kids are in school all year, they're gaining literacy skills, they're gaining reading skills, and then they break for summer. They go out and they play, they forget all about reading. Surprisingly, students lose as much as four months to five months of nine months of reading instruction. They lose a half a year in just a couple of months. We can stop this. Studies have shown that just by having a child read four books over the summer is the equivalent of going to summer, summer school, four books. And I think we can do that. The district is poised right now to make sure that all of our students, K through 5, this summer are able to go home with four to five books. And not just the books, instructions that connect those students to the help they need to read. So this is how we intend to, to work on that issue. It's just one of the things we want to do. We're developing a website, which will launch just this week, Revolution Read. It'll give parents tips, information to help their students read. Simple things like read to your children at night, point out noses, your mouth, your hands, simple things that you can do. Relabels when you go to the grocery store, things that many of us do. So the website will have information for parents that will help them through that. Go back to Slide 2. We'll coordinate lots of events. The superintendent is a visionary, and so am I, and we love to have fun. So we're going to plan community events that get us out of the community, gaining partnerships, helping our kids to read, and we're engaging all of the business entities I mentioned and more. What's next? Our next big thing on the agenda, in addition to the website, is a read-in in April with Mayor Brenda Lawrence. She is joining us to read to all K-5 students. We're looking at the Southfield Pavilion. We'll bus out all of the students for a full day of reading. We have children's book authors, people who love to read and love to write, sharing their passion, their enthusiasm for reading with our students. And the students will get to see, what does it look like when I love to read? What can I do with the gift of reading? And hopefully, we'll inspire some of them to be readers. Go back, please. We're looking at parent seminars. Scholastic has agreed to help us give parents tools, the things they need to actually meet with them and groom them to help teach their students to read. And books and businesses is an exciting idea. Just imagine if everywhere a parent went, every business, if they were going to the laundromat, or to a bank, or wherever their place of business might be, a beauty salon, and if they had their kids with them, there were reading corners, Revolution Read corners, corners with books. And every business is willing to do this. We're expanding celebrity readers to have more people read. This year, Mr. Logie has seen more people read in celebrity readers than ever before, and it's growing. We have politicians, we have people in the entertainment industry, all of them, that have a passion and a heart to help kids read. And we're going to allow opportunities for people to be involved. We're looking at developing a corporate club so that people can support this initiative at whatever level that they feel comfortable. And we want to take that support and put it in the classroom. Take that support and make sure our kids have books, make sure our teachers have the tools that they need to do the job. So we're excited about this. We're excited about the opportunity to partner with the community, to do a community-wide revolution, and to upset what's been a disturbing trend, and to watch our kids soar. If we give them the resources to read, if we give them the support to read, we know that they can do it. And I just invite all of you to join with us. We love to have your input, your suggestions, your support, and your participation. Thank you.
Thank you. We have definitely secured the date of April 10. We are trying to work out the logistics for the read-in kickoff, but I wanted all of my bosses this evening to know that I have signed you up. I knew you wanted me to do that. So I have faith for every board member to be a celebrity reader. We would love to have our students be celebrity readers, and I would love to have you in the audience come and read to our students. We want this entire community engaged in literacy. If we can do that, then we can really do the children. So we're putting the call out to everyone in the Southfield community. That includes if you work here, if you live here, if you walk by here. We want you. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to my candidate. We'll start with Ms. Stephanie Trump.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a couple of informational items that I'd just like to speak about briefly, just to sort of have the information about them when we get down to that part of the report. The first thing is, is, you know, because of the economic times that we're in, we've been trying to look at our capital improvements and put them in priority as to what is really in dire need. And at this time, we've decided that two of our elementary schools, McIntyre and Vandenberg Elementary, do need to have their parking lots repaid. We do that to ensure the safety of the students, the parents, you know, anyone that could be coming into the schools, and to prevent any unnecessary liability to the district also. So we've been talking to our architectural firm, but we may not go that way. We may go directly with the civil engineering firm, because that way we can save the administrative costs from the architectural firm. And Shaw Group is who, you know, gave us that idea and told us to look into it. So that's what we're doing at this point, trying to save some money there. But the cost of this project is expected to come in around $450,000. So, but it is something that needs to be done. And then in the future also, I'll be coming back to you and talking about what we want to do also at this time is have an assessment done by a company of all of our buildings, and have them help us look at, see what things that we may not know are coming up, so that we're not doing the patrimony, you know, motive operation. We want to really look at things and see where to put our money strategically, because there's so little of it. So if you have any questions, Dennis Gregory is here, and he could answer them. And we will be coming back to you, you know, when, after we go out for bids for this, and then we'll bring it back for an action item at that time.
So Debbie, I just want to be clear. So what we're going to do is to have an assessment of all of our facilities, and then we'll prioritize them in order. I'm so glad to hear, and I know the McIntyre parents are, that we'll be picking that.
Yes, these winters here are not, not good to our paving project. So the second thing that we have for information tonight is our district website provider is final site at this time, and it's going to expire this year. So Howard Vio, our Director of Technology, is here, and he's going to explain to you the bid process and who we are going to pick to be our new final, for our new website provider. provider.
Website. We're looking for someone to recommend to the board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, the reason we kinda went into this project was because we knew that with the, the E-Rate discounts, the USF discounts, everybody knows what that is, that, that little line down at the bottom of your phone bill where you contributed $2 to the Universal Service Fund. The school district gives a 78% discount on its internet access, its telephone service, but the discount is also available for district web hosting. And we knew that we could take advantage of that discount and save the district some money. Uh, one of the stipulations is that you have to go through a bidding process at the beginning in order to qualify for the discounts. We've gone through the bidding process, and in addition to receiving the discount, we'll also be able to save a substantial amount by switching our web, uh, hosting provider. Uh, we were paying about $20,000 a year to have our website hosted, and over a three-year period, we'll be able to save $48,000 over a three-year period. About half of that is the discount, the USF discount, and about half of it is being able to go with a, a different provider. Uh, the provider that we're going to has all the same features and, and tools that we take advantage of on our website, uh, news articles and calendars and, uh, and that sort of thing. Like Ms. Tremm said, our per con- uh, contract runs out in October. One of the stipulations of, uh, the Universal Fund, the E-Rate discount, is that we can't start the new contract until July. So July 1st, we'll start the process of reloading our website on the, the new web hosting providers' servers, and have the, the website up hopefully by the time, right around the time that school starts. Uh, there are three school districts in the area that are using Fox Bright, the, the new web hosting provider. Novi Schools uses them, Huron Valley Schools, and also Wayne Reza. So we've, we've got some really good contacts, we've, we've talked to them, they're very pleased with the product and service of, of Fox Bright. Uh, I've also had an opportunity to look at the administrative interface, where you go in and add pages and change pages, and it did seem to be very easy to use. We have about twenty people in the school district that update our website at the building level or the department level. Uh, and I think it's gonna be much easier for them to keep our website up to date. And I, I do have just a couple websites I can run back on the computer and kinda show you, kinda maybe the difference of maybe how our website looks and similar school districts nearby and, and their websites. So, just a minute.
You know, also because this purchase is below the, the bid threshold, it requires Board of Education approval, but we did wanna bring it to you tonight for information, because it is the face of the district. So we wanted to make sure that you're well aware of what the choices we are making.
Uh, switching, uh, web hosting providers will also give us the opportunity to kinda remap our website. I've worked with our, our new PR department with Jacqueline Robinson, and we've had some kind of ideas about brightening it up and changing the colors, and just making it- just making it easier to use, uh, helping people find things on our website. This is, uh, Novi's website. And again, you know, they've kinda got things organized a little bit differently across the top. Uh, they've got district and athletics and, and academics, and we've got just full range of how we set up our, our website. Our screen's a little bit small here, but, you see, they've got their calendar. And the calendar is formatted a little bit more like a calendar. Some of the criticisms we've had about our website is that the calendar is difficult to use. You have to scroll way down to find, uh, just the thing that you're looking for. Here is Huron Valley's website, uh, over in the Milford area. And, you know, again, our screen, desktop here is a little bit limited, but, but again, you can see kind of a, a different look and feel to their website. And finally, the last one I wanted to just briefly show you was Wayne Reza's, to kinda give you, um, really just the idea that we, we do have kind of an open palette with our website, uh, working with our, our PR department. I think it'll be just a wonderful opportunity to kind of freshen our, up our website, make it a little bit easier to use. Any questions or anything else?
Yeah. A question slash comment? I would love to see our school website, or I should say our district website, be able to link to these meetings in like a, a form of where you could, maybe you weren't able to come, or maybe you can't catch them on TV, but you can click, much like our city website. Um, so that's just a little, I don't even know what to call it, but-
No, that's, that's a very good suggestion. Uh, in fact, we've got a, uh, video streaming server that we can kinda take advantage of that, where we could, uh, load the video from the, the board meetings on that and, and be able to distribute it over the internet through our website. That's, that's an excellent idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have for today.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, most of my report is contained in the action items in, uh, 5A, but I do bring a labor relations update, and I want to inform the board of where we are with our current negotiations with the SLS group, which is the Southfield Michigan Education Support Personnel, uh, Association. Uh, on February 28th, the district found ourselves at an impasse with our bargaining. So we have contacted the Bureau of Employee Relations, Employer Relations, and, uh, requested the assistance of a mediator to get things back on track and hopefully bring the parties closer together with regards to the issues that are still at the table. We stay vigilant with the issues that we have and the proposals that we present as they do. And I look to bring a report to the board very soon about the next steps as we get closer to a successful agreement. That is all I have for today. Thank you.
Good evening. And I also have a very short report, and actually my report was all under the superintendent's report. But I just wanna say again how wonderful the American Legacy Project was. And I also wanna thank Denise also for her presentation and the empowerment that we wish to empower and, and project for all of our teachers, to create teacher leadership and provide that kind of empowerment, because it is necessary, it's very important, as we continue to move forward. Good instruction and good teaching. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd just like to add that Mr. Teague is now here. I think he probably went to the bat with the book first. Um, I'd like him to stand. He's responsible for connecting us with the resource, um, with the legacy magazine and the mobile. And Mr. Teague, I'm gonna have you come to the podium, just a minute and talk about
Good evening, board. Good evening, everyone. Uh, American Legacy, uh, project was a very wonderful experience, uh, for the adult community and Southfield Public School community. Um, Mr. Harry Kirk was instrumental in coming out and donating the truck for everyone to come visit. I thought it was a good experience for kids, uh, just to highlight our accommodating, uh, activity for African-American History Month. Kids did really well, and, uh, it was a wonderful experience. I thank you all that came by, and, uh, I'll say thank you. Also, I'm just noticing this artwork around here at the school. So the kids did wonderful things. Battling Books Program over at the Pavilion, uh, we have thirteen teams there, and, uh, it's a big turd out there, too. So, uh, kids doing really well, so, yeah. I just thank you all.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Maggie Stigman, report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you very much, Maggie Stigman. Now we'll have a head start report from, uh, trustee, or secretary, what secretary you like to say?
Thank you. Good evening, board, cabinet, superintendent. Um, the Head Start Policy Council met on March 12th at 9:30 at Bussie. Enrollment currently is full at 190 students, fifty-three, uh, fifty-three dropped and 113 on the waiting list. Upcoming events, which there are many, you might even wanna grab your calendar or your pocket planner. Um, March 15th, pediatric dental at 1:00 PM to discuss healthy eating and proper tooth brushing in the form of a puppet show. March 20th through the 21st, field trip to the Ann Arbor Hands-on Museum. March 25th, healthy eating workshop for our parents with Wayne State University. March 28th and 29th, a puppet show with Officer Buckberry, Officer Tate, to discuss pedestrian safety and good manners. March is Reading Month at Bussie. As a part of Revolution Read, Bussie will participate in DEAR, which is Drop Everything and Read. March 22nd, Bussie will be celebrating with Dr. Seuss. Every Tuesday, there are special workshops to address important issues, and important questions parents have. How can I help my child prepare? Every Wednesday, family service workers are providing various resource workshops that address a variety of topics. The first meeting was held on March 7th to meet with parents of children transitioning to kindergarten. I know Miss Hill was very clear that in FPS, you don't graduate from kindergarten, you transition from cr- from kindergarten. Um, self-assessment was, is complete. Currently working on the refunding package for 2012, 2013 school year. Must submit by April 1st. President Obama signed Public Law 112 dash 74, the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2012, which contains an increase of $409 million with an M for programs under the Head Start Act for the 2012 fiscal year. Core second assessment has been completed. Mrs. Dwyer is compiling data and will be establishing new school readiness goals based on the new data. The federal review team will be here the week of March 19th to complete a class assessment. This is a tool the federal government uses to assess classrooms, teachers, and children. April 16th through the 20th is National Head Start Conference in Nashville, Tennessee. Staff and a board member will be attending. Four staff members and policy council chair, Nia Bond, attended Michigan Head Start Conference on March 1st and 2nd. Miss Hill has been asked to present at High Scope International Conference May 2nd and 3rd in Isilani. Victory Day was a huge success in February, and Black History Program was also a huge success. Regarding the grant, the award amount of $1,294,451. To date, $705,655 has been used, $588,795,13 remaining, 54.5, 54, 54.51% of grant has been used. And Miss Hill is here, I know we'd like her to wave if she's here, and any policy council members.
Okay, you know, we have no unfinished business, we're just gonna move right to the action items. But before we get through all of those, I wanna make a, a note that there is a recommendation for student discipline. And that Action Item 5B is gonna require discussion regarding the student hearing that was held. However, privacy of student records are protected under FERPA laws, and, uh, FERPA is the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. Um, I'm gonna, uh, ask for a motion to hold closed session in the tonight's session, and reconvene to vote on Action Item 5B.
Mr. President, I move to hold a closed session before we adjourn this meeting to discuss Action Item 5B, the recommendation for student discipline due to the privacy of student records with FERPA, and that the board reconvene to vote on Action Item 5B.
Is there any support?
Support.
Okay, so the move is supported, so, um, that item will be dealt with at the conclusion of this meeting prior to us adjourned. Okay, um, this time I'll take a motion to open and approve the report, uh, remember on this report, the consent agenda is in the number. No, that's just, that's a little- I'll take a motion to open and approve the consent agenda. Report. The move is supported. Are there any questions regarding to the consent agenda? Can, um, Secretary, if you can, please.
Yes. Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Katz?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. You know it.
Thank you. Uh, this time I'll take a motion to open and approve Report 50 dash 50 to Justin Lees at Eisenhower.
Second.
Okay, move is supported. Um, questions? Let's move back around a little.
Yes, Ms. Tremm. Um, we've been successfully leasing a portion of the Eisenhower School to the Justin Center for the last two summers. The Justin Center runs a summer camp for autistic children, they're a nonprofit, and, um, you know, they use the ten classrooms, the gym, and the commons area. And we leased that to them for, um, between June 25th this year and August 17th, and they pay off $17,100 for that.
Yes.
Is the language pretty much the same as it has been in past years for the contract?
Yes, we didn't make any changes.
Any other questions? Hang on, Secretary, a conference vote?
Yes. Trustee Smith, yes. Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Katz?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Vice President Buchanan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This time I'll take a motion to open and approve Report 50 51, the recommendation for contract extension. Support, move, and supported.
Yes, I'm gonna ask Ms. Tamber, that she will go to the podium and give us the background. This contract is in her office. It's for a very specific service, a very important service, and I'll let her explain that.
Good evening, Ms. Tremm. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm asking for this contract to be extended. It's the consultant that, um, has two roles. One is to supervise psychologists so that they can be able to bill for Medicaid. There was a new law passed saying that school psychologists cannot bill for Medicaid, they must be licensed. Our school psychologists are not licensed psychologists, they are certified school psychologists. In order to bill for Medicaid, which is like a medical component, a PhD-licensed psychologist must supervise them certain amount of hours a month to write off their services so that they can bill. Her other role is to continue with the compliance of IEP. So we need to continue her role as a consultant so that first, we can continue with Medicaid billing and continue with compliance to IEP. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay, um, Vice Secretary, a conference vote, please.
Trustee Smith, yes. Trustee Will- Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Vice President Katz?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Buchanan?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we now move into the informational items. Um, let's see, Report 50 53, which is the purchasing. Um, most of these, uh, items fall under, um, the threshold for, that requires board approval, uh, so therefore, uh, these items can be purchased just by the decision without the board action. Uh, so you can choose to read that at your own comfort, rule of. Uh, the next item, Report 50 54, is the painting rehabilitation project. Is that what we just?
Yes.
Okay, so we've already, we've already covered that, and Report 50 55, which is the district website provider, which has also been discussed. Okay, we now come to the public participation, uh, portion of the meeting.
Everybody's happy about this.
For the moment.
Wow, okay, well then, moving right on, we get to board members. Uh, this is an opportunity for board members to share with the community, um, items that they have dealt with in the public and, uh, see my, see my vice president, Raring, don't miss that.
Yes, this morning, the superintendent, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, and I, and Mr. David Turner, attended the installation of the National Honor Society at Southfield High School. And I tell ya, it's really heartwarming to see the quality of students that come out of our high schools. These are wonderful students who perform community service and attempt to live by the standards of the National Honor Society, which are set very high. So I'm proud to be a-
So I'm proud to be associated with them, and it's a good morning.
You're here.
Thank you. Trustee Smith, school?
Oh, yeah, I'd just like to make a few comments on some activities that I've participated throughout the district, which have a tie-in around the world that I've found pretty interesting. I attended a, well, actually a Black History event over at Levy Middle School. And the keynote speaker that they brought in was Dr. Carl, Carl Mack.
Mack.
And Dr. Mack is the president of the National Society of Black Engineers. It was so coincidental because me had had a meeting with the Congressman at Warren, which happened to be a White House initiative. And what I got out of the whole thing was, we've got about thirty-five hundred engineering jobs that are going unfilled because we don't have enough qualified workers to fill the job. So I had a conversation with Dr. Mack, and we had a conversation with Congressman, and I've had other conversations with other legislators around the area. And in these conversations, they were rather impressed with the fact that we start our students in science, technology, engineering, and math in the sixth grade. Around the world, they grad when we start in high school or ninth grade. That was really a global topic. But as you saw, the Congressman was rather impressed to hear that we start in the sixth grade. So they're too tied in because we've got a big, Engineering Society of Detroit's got a big job fair going on. Field of Technology College has a really big engineering job fair and training program going on. We start our kids in the sixth grade, science, technology, engineering, and math. And I know President Buchanan and myself, Vice President Katz, we were just shocked at how elated the Congressman was and how interested he was in what we're doing here in Southfield.
Congress, who's, who's?
All right, Congressman Hanson Clark. And he wasn't here just to be here. He was actually really looking into this. I wanted to share that, and I think Building Principal, Ms. Teague is here. Great event. I think the National Society of Black Engineers, there's twenty-seven thousand engineers around the country. And this gentleman was sharing his experience, his Black experience in America, coming out of Mississippi to be an engineer to his level. So it was great job, Ms. Teague. It was not only enlightening to the community and the parents that were at that event. And I'm one of those, I'm one of those board members where no one knows. I had to get in a lot of doors and you don't know.
They know you have.
Well, yeah, Superintendent's given me some ID, so they know now. But I like to get into those events. I like to participate in the community, but more importantly, I want to let the community know how impressive an education that we offer in this community. If you, and I've talked to a lot of community members that have been here for thirty years, and they talk about how great of an education they got at Southfield Public Schools. And I always say, well, if you got a great education back then, we're offering a much better education today. So come on back. Thank you.
And, you know, just to follow up on your conversation, we're gonna have Ms. Teague because this was a pretty big event, and just fill, fill the community in on the whole event.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and thank you, Mr. Poole, for the accolades you've given us.
Well deserved.
We were very, oh, thank you. We were very fortunate. I'm very fortunate to have a good group of parents. And last year, they started an initiative called the Night of the Jaguar, because we're the Levy Jaguars. And the purpose of this event is to raise money for a scholarship fund that they have begun for students who desire to participate in our activities and field trips that are very expensive, and they can't afford to participate. For example, our band each year takes a trip either to Atlanta or Orlando, and our eighth grader's go to Washington, DC. And our students are able to apply for these scholarships and indicate their worthiness when the PTA awards them. Well, we always have a cater dinner because, you know, if you feed them, they will come. We always have our band and our choir perform. And this year, we were very fortunate that Dr. Mack agreed to come free of charge because he came twice, yes. He wanted to share his experiences and his knowledge and to teach the children that being smart pays. He mentioned the fact that many of our students, they see that athletics pays, they see that entertainment pays. And he wanted them to understand that being smart pays. And that was a message that definitely catches the eye of eleven to fourteen-year-olds. But we were so pleased to have as many parents come out as they did to hear his presentation of the African-American stance in America, his experiences, as Mr. Poole said, and how that led him to where he is today, and how all they have to do is put their nose to the grindstone, study, and they can achieve whatever they believe. So, thank you very much. Good job. Yes, I never cease to be astonished at the credits our students bring home to this district. I read on my email this week that our academic teams in national competition won thirteen trophies. And I'm hoping to come to the board at the next meeting so that we can honor them in person. But this is typical of what I read every week in this district. Our students do really well in the world, endorse credit. One of the things that Mr. Hanson Clark said when he walked through the schools was, in astonishment, all of our students were in the classroom, there were no students in the hall. They were all in the classrooms learning, which is what students are supposed to do. And what our students do so very, very well.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
I'm nothing. Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Lewis? I'm gonna bring a little levity to the board. We're glad to see the community as happy as many of the things that we're doing. We're also appreciative that we're working collaboratively with one another, just hearing out our differences. And I was just looking at something here on March two thousand twelve holiday special days, and there's one for each month. But I didn't know that this, that this month is Irish American Month, Music in Our School Month, National Craft Month, National Frozen Food Month. It kept going on and on and on. National Luttrell Month, National Peanut Month, National Women's History Month. You all know, we need you. We appreciate all the work, all the motivation, and all the pushing, the things that our women do for us, meaning. Behind, every good man is a good woman. Behind you, man, there's some good women as well. So I just want to make sure I got that out. This is Red Cross, Red Cross Month, excuse me, Social Workers Month. So take a look every now and then at some of the things that, the different days, and events, and markets that are affiliated to, like National Peanut Day, St. Patrick's Day is one we all are aware of. And once again, we appreciate all the work that our women do in society for education and other jobs as well. So thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to thank the personal committee to recognize, you know, what we do every day is for student achievement. And I know we've been having some challenges in one of our high schools with a music director. And what I found so unique about this group of students is they went out and decided they wanted to compete in the district competition. And I think they were competing in the ensemble area. What was so unique about these, these students was they, they knew about the competition, and they decided to organize themselves. And I think they solicited the support of a few teachers around the high school that helped them, you know, get in the rooms, to have some extra practice after school, to do what they needed to do to compete. Well, I, I saw an email, and I'm an old music guy. And I know what it's like, and I know the feeling, what it's like to get a one in district. And more importantly, I know the feeling you get when you're not expected to be in state. When you compete in state and you get a one, I know what that feels like. What's so unique about this little group of students is they assembled themselves, went out and competed. Their parents got engaged, made sure they got to the competition, and at the end of the day, they got a one in district. And that's what I call student achievement. But I'd like to recognize those students, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, in some way, shape, or form. I don't know their names, but I do know what it, I do know what it takes to get there. More importantly, I know how it feels, what you get. It's like winning semifinals in basketball. It's not, I was, I was trying to be concussed.
Last month, Trustee Williams and I had the opportunity to attend the Federal Relations Network Meeting in Washington, DC, which is hosted by the National School Boards Association. And basically, what it's, you have about a thousand school board members from across the country going to visit their legislators. And, you know, let's talk about the issues that really impact, you know, our job as school board members and how we keep our districts viable. And the main topic that we were dealing with during this was the passing of the Education, Elementary and Secondary Education Act, ESEA, which meant, many of us know it, No Child Left Behind. That act had been sitting for years. They hadn't made any revisions to it whatsoever. And there were so many aspects of the ESEA, No Child Left Behind, that were detrimental to districts, just in our ability to deliver to our students every day. So currently, the newest version of the ESEA has been passed by the House, and waiting for the Senate side and then on to the President's desk. But some of the things that are real key to this latest version of the ESEA is, and this, you know, for us, is really big because it kind of ties back to our earlier, our earlier presentation on special ed, that the punitive aspects of adequate yearly progress, AYP, are going to be eliminated. Okay? So what's gonna happen here, when we, when we look at AYP, and, you know, they're always taking our numbers and matching them up with, you know, what other districts are doing, what charter schools are doing. When you look at the fact that we have such a large special needs population here in Southfield, those students take the same standardized test as everyone else. And we know the Commonwealth puts the same standard for those students as every other student. And it's odd, but, you know, every year, we see this trend where, you know, after Count Day, all of a sudden, we have this influx of students, which normally would be nice. But the majority of the students that are coming in are students that are special needs students. Now, special needs students, in and of itself, is not a bad thing. We take on all challenges. But the issue is, they're coming with no funding because charter schools where they work are holding on to the money. They're not sending these kids to us and sending us the funds that they collected for those students. They're just sending them to students because they don't want to educate those students. They don't want to be responsible for, I don't care if I start a fight, you won't know me, and I'm just gonna put this out there. They don't care whether or not they're doing the job of educating those students. They're gonna dump those students back here. Well, we're not gonna take that in.
Thank you.
But it's the truth. Okay, enough. So we'll move on. In terms of the ESEA, though, some of the other aspects, elimination of AYP, there's gonna be better accountability in terms of, you know, really measuring, you know, student progress. And instead of just going by one test on an annual basis, we're going to, they're gonna go to multiple measures of student achievement, which is really gonna ramp up, you know, what our real success rate is. So when you look at, you know, just these few items and the revision of ESEA, that in and of itself is gonna really start to, you'll see a change in how public schools are starting to be rated as opposed to charter schools and what have you. Now, while we were there, the other thing that we were able to do was tour the Finnish Embassy. Now, that was a very interesting tour in that everybody there, we didn't want to hear anything about Finland other than about their educational system. Because all you ever hear on a national level is how, you know, American students are not achieving at the same level that students in Finland, Norway, and some of these other places. So I wanted to hear what it was that made this educational system so great. There are a lot of things that they do that are really unique in terms of education. But they don't have early childhood, you know, they don't have, what, early childhood, right, early childhood education, preschool. From, from the age of, you know, toddler on to the age of seven, these kids, they play. And that's how they learn. They learn through playing. They start school at the age of seven. So at the age of seven, they're in the first grade. So from the first grade until ninth grade was tenth grade. They're basically all in the same location. But from tenth grade on, they go into one of two tracks. They either go into a vocational track or an educational track. And the educational track means that they're gonna go on and continue to masters and PhD. And the other vocational track, they're going to, basically, the services, construction, engineering, electrician, things like that, plumbing. So what we saw was that there's such a high value for education within that society that we don't see that exists here in America. Their teachers are valued, like, I mean, they're held to the same esteem as their lawyers and doctors and judges, whereas here, all we ever hear about is how public schools are failing and public school teachers are failing our students. We know that not to be true here in Southfield because we don't have that issue. We, when we look at all the achievements of our students, it's because of the teachers that we have here that we're able to see the kind of accomplishment that we see day in and day out. So there's a different level of how teachers are perceived within their society. We need to adopt those same methods here and start looking at our teachers and valuing what they do. At one point, the teachers in the community were held in very high esteem. I don't know what happened, but we need to get back to that because we have to understand these are the people that we entrust our children to every single day. And how are they gonna do their job if they're being beaten down by the media, our parents, and everybody else on a daily basis? That has to stop. But one of the other things that I found very amazing is that they don't even have private schools in, in Finland because they put all of their emphasis into the public school system. All of their tax dollars and everything else goes into the public school system as opposed to how we do it here, where, you know, education is giddy up as though it were some type of commodity. And that's what we're looking at right now, how education is being commoditized. We need to be very careful about that right now because we're gonna be looking at the real civil rights issue of the twenty-first century is education and educational rights. So we need to be aware of that and continue to fight for a free public education for every student in America. Otherwise, we're gonna continue to slide backwards. So while we're being criticized by politicians and everybody else that want to treat this as a sluggish football, let's be aware of the fact that if, if you're gonna criticize us and hold us to the standard of Norway and Finland, you, Mr. Congressman, Mr. Senator, need to do the very same thing that the legislators in Finland and Norway are doing in terms of supporting public education. And thanks. Our next meetings are March twentieth, with student hearings, March- Our next meetings are March twentieth, uh, we have student hearings, March twenty-seventh, student hearings, and April tenth is our next regular board meeting. Uh, we are not gonna adjourn, but we're gonna pause a few times so we can go into closed session, but, um, this is gonna end the public portion of our meeting. I want to make sure everybody's.